Am we ready?
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the August 14th, 2024 regular meeting of Hamilton City Council. A little after six o'clock, we're here in City Council Chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. Rule call, please.
Moller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Fear. Vaughn.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Your motion to excuse Councilmember Fear for reasons known to the city, at least until she gets here.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to remove Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We're going to start off with an almighty prayer by Vice Mayor Eric Pullman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able to stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. We thank you for watching over our police and fire departments during our past event. Thank you for protecting them so that they were able to return safely home to their families. In your name, Lord, amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and has its own rule.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. We have some special presentations. And the first one, if you want to look this in, which one is it?
This is the engineering and resurfacing update by the Department of Infrastructure, presented by Alan Messer.
And Dan Arthur.
And Dan Arthur.
Good evening, heir of Member of Council. We've had a very busy construction season this year. Just want to go through very quickly some of the highlights. Just for starters, I wanted to highlight the grant funding that went into a lot of the construction that you saw out there this year. We had, for our resurfacing, we had $1.2 million from OPWC, a half million with our collaboration with the TID on Tylersville, another fully funded project there in Van Hook to finish out that Safe Routes, Billstein Bridge Rehabilitation. We had maximum $2 million you can get from ODOT for the municipal bridge fund. And then we had two considerable grants towards the Beltline Trail project. In addition to that, we have a number of grants that we received in 2024. Bell Avenue, we have $1.25 million from two different sources. We have a total of $8 million, which should cover the bulk of the cost of the HEP water tank. The $5 million one is a particular success that economic development and engineering collaborated on to acquire that one. We have a federal grant towards our gas replacement program. So we haven't had a lot of gas replacements going, and federal grants are fairly hard to come by, but we were able to secure 645,000 this year for gas main replacement. $1.2 million, again, for the resurfacing, and this is in addition to the $1.2 million that we spent on this year's construction. North Hamlin Crossing, we received another million dollars towards the design of that project from Sherrod Brown's office and the Congressional discretionary spending. We've been four-for-four on Safe Routes, the school projects, which the one we received this year was for Wasserman Road. And then G Street, if you remember, we got approximately almost a million dollars for the demolition of that. These are the, again, the highlights. We've had a number of projects going utility and roadway, but Eaton Avenue was a much-needed improvement that we completed this year. I know these came with some pain with the detouring and those sort of things, but these are major collectors that we were able to get out of the way from the resurfacing this year. New London Road, Northwest Washington, again, Beltline Trail from Main to Black is now complete. And then still in progress, Millville Avenue, the water main and the resurfacing, that's going to go through the winter. And then next year, you'll actually see the resurfacing. A lot of these projects, it seems like nothing's happening, but there's a lot of things happening underground. Millville is one of those. And then next year, you'll see the road go to black with the state resurfacing. So with Tylersville, that will get paved this year from HEP to Gateway. Millikan indeed, the underground is nearly complete, and we're probably about two weeks out from having asphalt through there. But the intersection has reopened in time for bus traffic for the schools. And Billstein Bridge is still on target to open in December. There's a Beltline Trail on both ends. If you haven't been out there, it looks really nice. See the wood railing there on the high main end and then the aluminum railing there on the Black Street end. That's actually, project was slated to be done in November. It got done here just a couple of weeks ago and really would have been done much sooner, but there was backorder on this aluminum railing. One thing I want to highlight on the Billstein Bridge rehabilitation, the original bridge, so the beams of the bridge, the abutments are being retained, and then the rest of the bridge is basically being stripped off over the railroad and rebuilt. The original bridge did not have a sidewalk on it. It had two raised areas of, I'll call it median or protector for the parapet wall on each side. We were able to consolidate those to a single side without any cost to the project. And then with the new bridge, get a sidewalk in place rather than just going back with what we had. This is really the story of the summer is the resurfacing. We've had a number of resurfacing projects, both with the contract work and with public works, and Dan's going to speak to that in a moment. I'll cover the contract work that we've done for the year. It's extremely difficult to see, but that's all the streets that we've done. And those highlighted in green are those that were funded with levy funds. This is Eaton Avenue, and something I'll call to your attention that maybe a lot of people don't realize. We started a couple years ago raising manholes to grade with this concrete. You see the two circles there in the right picture. And so you'll see the asphalt get done, and you might see a bump initially at the gas valves and the manholes. And that's because we come in later, once that asphalt is set up and cooled, and then essentially a big core machine comes in, cuts the asphalt out, you fill that in with concrete. You get a much smoother surface, lasts a lot longer. You don't get those bumps that you see maybe due to the lack of compaction of that asphalt around that structure a few years out. And we're really excited about that. It's really not that much more expensive, but it is a much better product. Here's New London Road, looks great. Northwest Washington Boulevard, something else I'll call to your attention on this one. The picture on the right, a year ago, we started what's, we call it concrete cutting, but essentially it's shaving down the concrete in the sidewalk where you have a tripping hazard. And why that's important is those sidewalk blocks would get assessed to a property owner, and in this case, maybe one or both of those would have to be replaced. By doing this, we're able to get that smoothness to make it safe essentially for half the price. So we're saving our citizens, and we give them the option. They could still opt to have those blocks replaced. A lot of them are opting to have it cut down and shaved instead. This is the overall map. A little difficult to see from this view, but you can see from Tylersville all the way over to New London, we literally were doing paving, major corridors throughout the city from the west end to the east end. If you have any questions for me, I'll go ahead and answer them now, or you can wait till the end after Dan speaks to the Public Works portion of it.
I'd like to have you send all that to council if you would, because see, that's amazing from the grants to the streets, to just being creative for our citizens to help them save somebody. So if you could send that to all of council, your deck up there, that'd be great. Imagine all council would like to have.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Now, can you tell us, and again, the money was awarded here recently for Wasserman Road out where Ridgeway School is, when might that sidewalk project take place?
So that one will happen next year.
Gotcha.
Typically, with a lot of the grant money, it trails by about a year. It's just more hoops to jump through in the approval process of the plans and such.
I understand. And that's why I asked if it'll be next year. That's fine. But sometime when we talk about the money, people believe the money's there, and why doesn't it happen tomorrow? So again, takes a lot of time and steps to get to that process and things. But again, as the mayor said, this is remarkable. Thank you.
It's worth the wait. This year, I tallied up, we did about 13 million in transportation improvements. About 8 million of that was through grant funding, so goes a long way.
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give you an update on the work that we're doing internally. We were so graciously able to buy these pieces of equipment. You guys proved us to get the one on the left, that's the mill machine, and that mills off the street and shoots it right in the back of our truck. So we're so much more efficient. It's, we're twice as efficient as we were before. Before, we ground it up with the front end of a Bobcat and then had to go back and sweep it up and clean it up. It took two, three days. So that's really been a big blessing. And then apologize for my voice on the back end of a summer cold. Piece of equipment on the right-hand side, the Leboy there, that's our new paver that we got. And it's able to, on a typical street, we can pave it in two passes instead of what was taking us three or four passes. It's been fantastic. We started the guys out, oops, I went wrong direction. Started the guys out on this list of streets, and wanted to hit some of the streets that were just block by block at first to kind of get used to the equipment, have the guys learn what they're doing, get used to it before we tackled some larger streets. We started out on just a couple blocks of Cleveland Avenue and some side streets to get used to everything. The guys were working on other equipment. We had company come in and train the guys on the equipment, and then went out and hit the roads. Turned out really good. This is the 600 and 700 block of Cleveland Avenue. The before picture is on the left-hand side. You can see it was just in really bad shape, and the potholes were getting to where we were filling them all the time. The guys were just constantly out there having to fill them. We can go in, mill that off, and put a layer on. We're milling off anywhere between an inch and a half and two inches off on the street, and then putting that back on top. And it's working out great. This is Sandalwood Terrace. Again, you can see that, you know, the street was in pretty bad shape. We get a lot of complaints, a lot of 3-1-1 calls. We were able to address that as well. And then Nealon Boulevard, this wasn't actually on our list, but if you remember driving on the inside lane on that, it had really bad ruts. I would not drive my motorcycle over top of it. I avoided it at all costs. We went out there and were able to close that down and fixed that whole entire lane, got it fixed up, got rid of the rutting. Then while we were out there, it rained. Well, we still had the road closed, and we noticed there was a bad spot where people could hydroplane. So we were able to, took on a little larger area, but fixed that area as well and got rid of the water problem that was out there. This is Weenman Drive. Again, this is kind of from the same location, just huge potholes. The top of the road's all ravelling, and gave them a nice new driving surface. This was one that wasn't on our list either, but came up, and it was, you know, one we were hoping to get to in the future, but we had some downtime in between projects with some things that happened with Paragon Way, with some base repairs that we ended up having to get a contractor to do the work on. So we pulled back and did a few of these roads. Campbell Drive was one of those, from Route 4 to Greenwood. And it was, again, just in horrible shape. Took this one on later in the season, so we knew what we were doing. It's a little bigger road. The guys did a fantastic job. We also did Rose Avenue, bunch of 3-1-1 complaints. You can see where the road is kind of underneath where the canopy of the trees were, have a lot of problems and potholes. Fixed that one up. And then recently, we tackled Cornell. Cornell was probably one of our worst streets. It had a PCI score of zero. We went out there, met with engineering, came up with a couple of ideas on how to attack it, and milled it off, did the work, and it turned out great. Finishing up the last block of that this week. Here's another piece of Cornell from Paris to Sea. Today, we've spent about $220,000 on all this work. We've done almost 2.8 lane miles worth of pavement in-house already. The guys are really learning the system and doing a great job with it. We kind of keep tally on it, see how they're doing. But they 've taken ownership in it, they've taken pride in it. We just couldn't be happier that you guys trusted us to do this internally, believed in us, and let us get the equipment and let us move forward with it. So it's made a huge difference. We're currently, we have another list that we're working on. We're trying to find additional funds of about $150,000, working with Dave on that, to continue through the rest of the year.
What's the comparison between three miles done in-house, three miles done when we contract that out? What's the difference? I mean, financially, I'm sure it's pretty amazing.
It is. We haven't done final apple-to-apples. I kind of wanted to get through a better part of the season, do what we've done this year, and then compare that to what we've been spending. We're guessing and estimating that it'll probably be, you know, double or triple is what it would have cost us to send it out, because we're paying our labor already, right?
Yes.
We've got these guys, they'd be doing all the work. Now they're doing this work. So you're completely wiping out the labor factor. And on any of those jobs, you got to send them out, you got to do prevailing wage, you know, wage rates for everybody. You have mobilization fees for each location that they do. There's different mobilization fees that go into that where we don't have that. You know, it's ours. So we'll look into that and come back, you know, later in the fall, later in the year, and put some numbers of that for you.
That's great.
But we're saying probably a double to triple to save.
Right. Thank you for the entire project.
Thank you guys for letting us do it.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Dan, when you do the milling and then the resurfacing, do you also do the sewers and the concrete? Are you raising those?
So not on this one. But what this is, we're trying to hit a good window, right? We've got the projects that Alan just talked about, that are the big capital improvements projects, where we're going in there, we're hitting the utilities, we're doing the curb and the sidewalk and taking care of all that. What this is, is knowing that there's some of these streets, because our streets are in pretty poor condition, that we wouldn't be getting to for those underground utilities or those other ones. This is to fix those streets up so that our citizens have great roads to drive on. But this is to buy us the time, the extra five years, 10 years, 15 years, until that capital improvements project would actually get there. So they've got nice surfaces to go on.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Dan, kind of a fun question, because a neighbor whose street was done called me and said, Tim, what happens to the stuff that they mill and put in the back of the dump trucks? And I said, I'll ask. Where does that go?
So we take it back, and they recycle it at the asphalt plants.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, we worked that back into them. One other thing I forgot to mention, Alan had talked earlier about that Mr. Manhole process, where we go back and core those out. We're actually going to try to see if we can take that on. So we're going to rent that equipment. It's not that expensive to rent, and try it on some of these streets that we've actually done the work on. Try the Mr. Manhole there, and some of the 3-1-1s that we get where it's just a one-off where you got to thud, thud on that one manhole. Try them in some of those locations. We can rent the equipment for like four grand. And so we're going to try it out to see if it's something we want to do down the line to take over that as well for, you know, our 3-1-1 calls.
That would be great.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Dan, I just want to thank all your guys. I've seen them out there working throughout the summer. I appreciate all the work that they do, and I appreciate your leadership on this project. Alan, this has been a good summer, although at times we took some calls. But I can tell you, I think people are really pleased with the outcome of this. As we continue to look forward and continue to move through this process, do you have a plan for next year that you could present to us at some other time, or are you ready?
Yes. So we'll be putting out another paving package this fall, and then another one in the spring. Streets for this fall have been identified, and we're out there marking the concrete now, so we could present that at a future meeting. We were asked to be brief, given all the caucus reports there are tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Anything else? Thanks, guys, and your entire team.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
If I could, just echo Joel's sentiment to Dan and Alan. Thank you, guys, to Edwin, to the entire infrastructure team, especially Public Works. This couldn't happen. The streets that we were able to improve this summer wouldn't be possible without the street levy fund and the ingenuity and the creativity of our team here. So I know one of the questions was, you know, the apple-to-apple comparisons. The fact is, these small streets in our neighborhoods wouldn't get the kind of attention that our Public Works folks are able to get into these small streets and make really huge improvements on these streets that, you know, mobilizing an entire capital project would just not be possible. So appreciate you, guys. I know there was a lot of frustration this summer with the number of streets that we were working on. It is an inconvenience. We tried to manage and monitor that as best we can, but we also had a deadline here. We really wanted to get these streets open for school, and a credit to our team for delivering on that. We have great streets, they're in great shape with what we were able to do this summer, and we got some more work to do, and we'll be back with a plan here later this year. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next up will be a special presentation by Mike Ger related to Amtrak conceptual opportunities.
Good evening, council members and members of the audience. I'm Michael Ger. I am a project manager with the Public Works Department. I'm here to talk a little bit about conceptual opportunity with Amtrak and share a little bit of details about some conversations that we've had with the Amtrak folks and also some of the other municipalities. So the city of Hamilton was recently approached by Amtrak a few months back, and they wanted to share with us some of the things that they're currently doing with regards to modernizing, more or less, a new era of passenger rail in America. With that being said, they talked a little bit about the heavy investment of 50-plus billion dollars that's currently going on with modernizing their trains, improving the speeds, comfortability, actual reduction of emissions, what have you, on their trains themselves, as well as new station locations, new routes that are more accommodating. And along with that come new tunnels, bridges, and more or less infrastructure improvements. They also have the backing financially, pretty substantial, from the federal government, congressional and presidential. As part of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, they received $22 billion. And then as far as the Federal Rail Administration, they received an additional $10 billion as far as modernizing critical infrastructure. So needless to say, they have the federal government helping them push along. Now, what does that mean for here locally, as well as, you know, here in the state of Ohio? Well, in Ohio, Amtrak is proposing new service corridor, for example, the 3C plus D, which is, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second, but it's the Cincinnati, Dayton, Columbus, and Cleveland proposed line. They also are looking at new hubs that would be in the Cincinnati, Cleveland, and locations. So as you can see on the map there on the left, the Cincinnati to Chicago, they're looking to add additional four daily round trips that would be on the Cardinal line. That would go through the city of Oxford, on up into Chicago, and the Cardinal potentially could make a stop here, possibly in the city of Hamilton. The Cleveland to Detroit, which would go through Toledo, and then as well as the Cleveland to New York City line. Now, our friends and neighbors there to the north, as I mentioned, the city of Oxford, following our conversations that we had had with Amtrak, our engineering team and some of our leadership, we reached out and done our due diligence, talking with some of the other municipalities in the state of Ohio, as well as some consultants that have a little bit more expertise, you know, in the rail line. And we reached out and spoke with the folks at Oxford, and they are actually aggressively pushing forward here. They, at the location at 97 West Chestnut Street, those that grew up in this area would recall that as the former site of Tallawanda High School, is a multi-transit purpose hub that's going to support bus line with Butler County Regional Transit Authority, the Miami Bussing, as well as the future Amtrak Cardinal line. Now, the Amtrak Cardinal line is a line that runs actually from New York City to Chicago. So along with many stops along that. Talking with Oxford, we were able to discover that the cost for just the bus line side of it is roughly about $26 million. However, they were able to achieve 21 million, roughly about 80% of that, through a federal fund, the U.S. Department of Federal Transit Administration Grant. Other funding also was able to be secured through the OKI Regional Council Government, as well as also with Miami University and Butler County Regional Transit Authority. Groundbreaking has already started on that side. And then the Amtrak station design is planned to take place later this year, with the hopes that they could become operational sometime 2026 to 2027. Oxford would operate and maintain the station with at least with CSX. Now, as I mentioned before, one of the other big items potentially in the state of Ohio is the 3C plus D line. This is a conceptual line that is currently being proposed by Amtrak. They have proposed it to the Ohio Rail Development Commission, who is planning to hire a consultant sometime here in the very near future. We were told, the last time we spoke with them was going to be this summer. Have not yet heard, but I got to believe it's any time they're going to announce a consultant to look at the viability of that actual line. The estimated ridership that they're planning is somewhere between 4,000 to 500,000 annually on that line itself. Phase one of that study that they're planning to participate in is looking to do would be a 10-month study, providing that the viability is there. Then they would proceed with a phase two, which would then look at the actual stops along that line that make the most sense. Both CSX and Norfolk Southern are rail operators being considered by the Ohio Rail Development Commission for that line. And the city of Hamilton and the city of Sharonville have both expressed interest as being suburban Cincinnati locations for that 3C plus D line. The good thing is, is that communities that are involved or have a lot of Justice 40 community support are strongly considered for this as part of the study. So with regards to the city of Hamilton and an Amtrak conceptual train station, looking at, talking with, or actually talking with other municipalities and some consultants based on, you know, their findings and some of their plans, the city would be looking at sites that would essentially need to support roughly a parking lot that could, you know, roughly be around two acres. Amtrak doesn't have a requirement of this, but this is essentially recommendations based on what we've heard. Up to and supportive of roughly 1,300 feet of siding, preferably. Cost estimates could range somewhere between 14 to 15 million, but again, that's based upon the type and size requirements of the station itself. As I mentioned before, federal funding, up to 80% of that could be covered. But where we're at with this, following our conversations, is that we would want to proceed with hiring a consultant that has more expertise to help us with some of those evaluations and update those costs to be more true estimates. Maintenance costs at this time would be unknown. It would be determined at a later date. Station location, as well as any potential safety improvements along the rail lines, would also be part of that study that we would have to take into consideration. So where do we go from here going forward? Well, next steps, the city of Hamilton, as I had mentioned before, we're not rail experts. We've done, you know, with We've done, you know, with a great due diligence with our engineering department, talking with several folks, we've gotten a wealth of information, but it really to do justice for this and to really try to gain traction, we need to hire a professional consultant. Our plan, what we would like to do is to do a feasibility study, where we would put an RFP out there to hire a consultant. We're estimating up to maybe 30,000, based upon what some of the others have expressed their cost to be. Estimated timeline to complete a study would be roughly somewhere in the ballpark of nine months following the approval to proceed with that RFP. That would be nine months for the actual study itself. We would also look at, you know, the Ohio Rail Development Commission on their phase one and phase two in regards to the 3C plus D line, see what their findings are looking like, and as well as we're gonna start, you know, then following and looking at grant opportunities of where we might be able to seek some funding for this. So more or less, this is, you know, to provide kind of an understanding of some of the conversation details that we've been able to achieve, provide awareness of where we are and kind of an understanding of, you know, this potential opportunity, and then discuss more or less next steps. So with that said, turn it over to really any questions.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
First of all, thank you, Mike, Alan, Rich, Edwin, all of you guys have done a tremendous job thus far. You know, we've been working on this for a couple of years now, and I really appreciate all of the effort staff has put into this, and I agree that, I think it's time we do take this to the next step and, and get the real, the real numbers, get the real story here. You know, we're pretty serious about this, and folks from Washington to Columbus know how serious Hamilton is. You know, this $30,000 will be money well spent. This is, passenger rail coming back to Hamilton, this is a one-time only, and in my opinion, we may not see this opportunity ever again, and I think this is our, our chance to put Hamilton out there, to show everyone in the state, especially, you know, the decision-makers in Columbus, how serious we are about this endeavor because we know the benefits it will create here in our town, not just for residents, but for our businesses, and, you know, additional economic development opportunities. So, you know, this feasibility study will tell us everything that we need to know in order to get Amtrak in Hamilton, so I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea that we do this. And also, I really wanna highlight, you know, back to my first comment where, you know, this, this is an idea, and, you know, back in the 50s and the 60s, I-75 was just an idea. And the council back then didn't have the vision to lobby for this idea. You know, they didn't have the leadership to go to the meetings, to lobby, you know, for Hamilton and the business community and for the residents. I don't wanna make the same mistake that that council did back then. This is an idea now, but this is, this is huge, this is the next best thing the state is going to construct, so we wanna make sure that we're on the right side of history this time around. Thank you.
Michael, thank you for your comments about the need for a vision. That's really important. This is important, I think, for recreation, education, and business. I mean, this is, this could change all three of those areas for those who come into our city than those who leave our city to go taking a train to Columbus on the way to various places across the state. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Mike, for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Last on our special presentations is a Butler County Elderly Services Advisory Council Annual Impact Report by members of the Butler County Elderly Services Advisory Council and Council for Aging.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sean Cowan, and I am here to provide you an update tonight on the Butler County Elderly Services Program, pretty much known as ESP. This program is funded by the taxpayers of Butler County, and it helps older adults in the county access basic services to help them remain independent at home. In 2023, ESP provided in-home supportive, supportive services to almost 1,200 residents of the city of Hamilton. I'd like to start tonight by sharing a story from our most recent annual report, which I think everybody had got a copy of, and we wanted to talk to you about a gentleman whose name is Lee Moll. And Lee Moll is an older adult who lives alone. He was a truck driver until he had an accident that left him confined to a wheelchair. This change had a devastating impact on Lee Moll's life, his bills piled up, the clutter in his house piled up, and he found himself cut off from the outside world, including his family. Things began to look up for Lee Moll when he connected with ESP. His case manager arranged to have his home cleaned and decluttered, and Lee Moll was given some special cleaning tools to make it easier to maintain things on his own. A home care aide now visits a few times a week to stay on top of things and help Lee Moll with laundry. Lee Moll had been experiencing food insecurity, and ESP was, was able to begin providing him home-delivered meals. For Lee Moll, though, the biggest benefit is the ability to be able to live in his home and have his grandchildren visit him there. In his own words, that was worth living for, for him. ESP was created for people like Lee Moll, older adults who without help would be forced to move into a nursing home, losing their independence, privacy, and connection to home and community. And for those who go on Medicaid in the nursing home, the cost of their care would be much higher for taxpayers. It costs about $384 a month to provide in-home care through the elderly services program, compared to more than $6,000 a month in a Medicaid nursing home. This makes ESP both compassionate and cost-effective. Eligibility for this program begins at age 60. Eligible individuals need help with basic daily activities that you and I take for granted, things like getting dressed, bathing, cooking, or getting to a doctor's appointment. In 2023, the program helped more than 4,200 Butler County older adults remain independent in their homes. ESP is truly a community partnership. The program is run by council on aging via contract with the Butler County Commissioners. This partnership includes local contracted service providers who provide the oversight, care, and supportive services clients need. ESP clients have an important role to play in this partner, in this partnership. Some clients, depending upon their resources, have a copayment for their services, which helps the program stretch funding to serve more people. And finally, taxpayers. Taxpayers and voters play an important role in this partnership. In fact, without their support, the program would not exist. 90% of the program's funding comes from Butler County's senior services tax levy, which was first approved by voters in 1996. The most current senior services levy was renewed in 2020 by a record margin of 77%. It's a 1.3 mil levy that costs property owners about $40 per year per $100,000 of property value. The levy makes up a very small portion of your tax bill, just 1 to 2%. The current levy will expire at the end of 2020, 2025, and must be approved again by voters in order for the program to continue. It's been 19 years since the last increase to the senior services levy. ESP's administrators work hard to ensure tax dollars are used as effectively and efficiently as possible. In fact, there's been several recent innovative changes that are helping the program save, save money and to serve more people in our community. For example, ESP can fast-track services for older adults who need short-term care after being discharged from a hospital or rehab facility, ensuring they have essential care in place, in place to recover at home. A new professional laundry service with local companies is taking the pressure off home health agencies that traditionally provided this service, saving money by using commercial laundry facilities. And using a gig economy model, clients can now use an app to hire their own, their own home care workers and set up a schedule that meets their needs. I know I've shared a lot of information tonight about this very important program, but I hope you'll have an opportunity to take a look at our program's annual report. It provides more information about who this program serves and its impact on the entire community. Everyone involved in this program is grateful for the strong support from the community. We do appreciate your time tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Say, "Thank you, this is a very informative annual report comparing costs of a nursing home versus cost of staying home."
Big difference.
It's tough to put a price tag on, on whether to stay at home, to truly stay at home, surrounded by who you wanna be surrounded by with, and it's just, that can be pretty much priceless.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Okay. Record reflect, the council member, Fear, is here at 6:48. She was properly excused in the early part of the meeting for reasons known to the city council. Okay, we're ready for audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to make comment may speak during this part of the meeting. If there's a, if there's an issue which is up for a vote on the council floor, you can wait to speak until the point when it is read into the record before we vote. All individuals who wish to be an audience of citizens are required to sign this blue public speaking book that I'm holding on to now. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. First, we have Caitlin Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Caitlin, and I am the Director of Programming at Spooky Nook Sports Champion Mill. I've actually worked for the Nook in Pennsylvania for 10 years, and in January of this year, my husband and I moved to Hamilton to spend the year working for the company here. We live in the New London neighborhood and have been frequenting many of the local establishments and are enjoying our time in this city. Sarah Silver from 17 Strong invited me here today to quickly talk about the upcoming Neighborhood Nights Out at the Nook. I am very excited that Spooky Nook is partnering with 17 Strong to offer these exciting community events. These nights will be a great opportunity for Spooky Nook to connect with the community of Hamilton and for the neighborhoods to explore all that our venue has to offer at no cost. We are offering a different night out for each neighborhood. Guests will be able to free play on our courts for a variety of sports such as basketball, volleyball, pickleball, and soccer. Our concessions at the sports complex will be available for purchase, and all neighbors will also receive a coupon for dining at our hydraulic bar. Some of the other businesses at our venue, such as Pedals and Wicks, are going to be offering something special for these evenings as well. Part of Spooky Nook's mission is to create incredible places for people to gather and to bring families together through sports, entertainment, and events. Collaborating with 17 Strong has been a great way for us to honor this mission. This is our third opportunity to partner with 17 Strong, and we look forward to future ways that we can work together to welcome the Hamilton residents to Spooky, Spooky Nook. Our first night out is next Wednesday, August 21st, and we're welcoming the North End neighborhood. Over all of the nights, we have about 65 people registered so far. We want a lot more. So I did bring some flyers today, if everyone wants to take one. It has a QR code for registrations and the dates for all the dates, neighborhood dates. So just help us spread the word, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Do you have the flyers here with you tonight?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Here's a stack, and there's some more outside.
Great. Questions, please.
Caitlin, so folks can go to the 17 Strong website, correct? And also, the QR code will be there, and I've seen a lot of it on Facebook as well to register, and it's open to children, adults, it's families.
All ages, really, because if you wanna play pickleball, you can be any age to do that. If you wanna throw a cornhole bag, you can be any age to do that. So we're welcoming anyone.
I really encourage people to go because it's free, and a lot of our residents have not had an opportunity maybe to see Spooky Nook. A lot of folks thought that when it was built, it was going to be for our high school and elementaries, and it's not, it's for the country, and a lot of our folks just haven't had a chance to go, so I really hope people do. And each night is a different neighborhood, so you meet your neighbors, too.
Mr. Mayor? Please.
Ms. Silver, do you have some flyers that we can make to where they were like in, you know, four, four on one page with, with the QR code that we could hand out to kids at the schools in Fairwood for the 21st, in Fairwood and Garfield and Crawford? I think that'd be helpful, and I'd be willing to pass them out at Garfield.
Great.
Good idea.
Anyone else? Thank you for your opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Catherine Rov. Wanna come on up to the podium? Yeah. Well, first, we had to something first for you.
Oh.
We know who you are, but all these folks watching TV Hamilton may not know, but identify yourself if you would, please.
I'm Catherine Rov, and a former member of Hamilton City Council, and 26, I think, about 26 years ago or something like that, when I quit. But anyway, I wanna do this right. Mr. Mayor, City Council, gentlemen, men, uh, see, I've got ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Catherine Rov, and I'm here this evening to thank you for honoring me with the name of Catherine Rov Cole. Of course, Mr. Cole has been gone for a long time, but I really do appreciate it, and Bob Harris, who really started the ball rolling, I believe, and he's always there, so I really appreciate him. So I wanna thank you for naming the street after me. That was a great honor and very surprised. And I want to thank the citizens of Hamilton because they supported me all those years. They didn't have to do it, but they did. And like, when I first ran, and I really worked hard. I didn't know anything about politics, and the people didn't know about me, only things that I was participating in. And I said, "This is hard. If I don't get the votes after my work this year, it's not worth it." Because I said, "I'm going to work," and when I work, people will show me whether or not they appreciate it. So I was there 12 years. It wasn't hard anymore, but it was rewarding, and I enjoyed what I did. Some people say it's hard, yeah. One day in church, someone said to me, "I tried to reach you," and I said, "Well, I was out." And they said, "You're on 24/7." I said, "Well, I guess I can go to church." But anyway, that's the way people feel about it when you're on City Council. You're on the job 24/7, they call you all times, and I do appreciate what they do for me and what I did for them, I like that. So anyway, I was walking down the street one day, this is a true story. I was walking down High Street one day, years ago, there was a council member, a former council member, and I passed by her, and I spoke to her, and I called her by name. And her friend, I'm sorry if that's my phone. And I called her by name, and I spoke to her, and the lady with her said, "See, she remembered you." And so I will say, one of my directors, our directors, who lives far away, sent me a beautiful card and thanked me for all the work that I'd done. So I want to say to you, I do know that people remember, and I wanna thank you so much for remembering.
Thank you.
Good evening, Americans, councilmen. Okay, I'm still haven't seen these man covers, on the west side, the east side, both are singing. singing down now. We were good for a long time, and now it starts singing down to cracking like that. Who makes them like that?
Well, Jim, let's take all your comments and address them one by one. Is that what you're bringing to us tonight, or are there other issues that you want to mention here?
There's too much of them. I'm seeing a bunch on High Street and a bunch on, on Main Street, too.
All right.
Also, I'm actually, um, uh, um, uh, there's, um, we, uh, you know, um, okay, my friend got some, it's a socar accident this evening, real side here at the, at the corner of, um, here, 315 High Street, and I caught an accident there. I called the cops, they called the cops, too. It took them over 20 minutes to get there, and I'm saying, I'm a big of a city.
I doubt if it took 20 minutes to get there, but I will say this, there's multiple calls that they have to address. They do. Obviously, if you know anything about the fire last week, we respond. I mean, our professional.
I know, I know, the firemen.
Our professional firemen and police officers.
Firemen respond fine.
We respond.
The police officers get there last. It seems like, police officers get there last.
Now, so, I'm just going to say, we get the job done. We got a great city team. Involving the manhole, I want you to make a list.
Okay.
And give it to either Daniel or Rich Angle.
Okay.
And they do what they do, and they'll look at it, and obviously, you know, we pay attention to when you speak, but I'm just going to have to correct you a couple times, like, "We respond," and I'm just not going to.
Well, thank you.
I'm going to that, Jim, not going to do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good evening. Is Bob Harris out, outside?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening. Bob Harris, President of Southeast Civic Association, which covers the 2nd and the 4th Ward. My address is 429 South Second Street, and I wish to say hello to the Audience of Citizens and Council. Tonight is a good night. It's been a very special night, and I do want to start out, we're talking about one of my favorite subjects, street paving. I think what we're doing is great. I do get a lot of questions, and one of my number one questions is, "Why are we paving 20 some streets on the West Side and only one on the East Side of the river?" I don't have that answer, but I keep telling people, "If you want to talk to Council, I'll see if I can bring Council to the square, and you can ask them any questions that you want." So, I have made that statement, and I'll make good on that as long as the weather holds out. Next, I do want to thank Council, the Mayor, and everyone who made the street naming process a success. For Mrs. Catherine Ruff Cole, we did have the 1969 Queen of Garfield present, and it was a great day. It was a good day, and I was so happy just to see someone of that stature that I know that gave and worked and worked, and people talked. People said things that I knew weren't true, but I knew that she gave of her life. I knew that she did three terms on Council, and I knew that she deserved everything that she got that day, and I am so glad that I was alive to see it. The other part for Roger Trottman's Day, that was a great day. The city turned out. Everybody worked. Tidymen worked. Council worked. Council showed up. The Mayor showed up. It was a good day. Someone said to me, "You had two divas at Trottman's, you know, street signing." I said, "Who are you referring to?" And they, uh, they pointed the two ladies out, and I got to tell you this, Letitia Block was one of them, and Jean Pope was the other. But anyway, congratulations, divas. It was so great, and each time, from the first street signing on July the 17th to July 23rd, each one got better, and I think that we're doing a better job, and we're recognizing people, and people are recognizing Council. So, the more you show up, hey, the more we can shore up. I want to thank you again, and it was pleasingly pleasant, and I think that we're doing a good job, and we're going to continue to get better, and I'll keep coming so that we get better. So, God bless you. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Let me address two things real quick. First off, thank you for your leadership in the honorary street naming process event. I mean, your leadership is clearly there, first one and the second one, both. Regarding paving, I like to see the history of the last five years of paving, and I'm sure there's, there's not going to be a situation where it's all one side or the other side. I did count eight different neighborhoods have benefited from our new street paving equipment. I counted it correctly, Dan. It's eight of our neighborhoods. So, that's significant, and that's East Side and West Side both. But I think, look at this picture of paving, let's look at the last five years and the current, and I think it's going to be considered very well spread out across the city, but let's see what it looks like, okay?
Okay, I'll take you up on that.
Yes, sir.
Monday night in Sika's meeting, it was brought up by the Pastor Olamo. He says, "Bob, I go out," and he says, "I pull the weeds up out of the street." And he said, "That's something that the city should do. If they're taking care of the streets, then the weeds would not be growing up in the streets." There was a lot of conversation about streets.
Yes.
And so, I'm looking forward to the city of Hamilton having the best streets, second to none. I keep saying that, and I'd like to see it happen. We're growing, we're getting people coming to the city, and we need to raise the whole city equally fast as we can get it done, but with quality work, and be proud of our city and make Hamilton number one. Thank you. God bless you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fear.
Bob, can I ask a question?
No.
I mean, I do like.
I'm just joking.
But have you ever thought of emailing your question to the department? Because that written word could speak volumes, and especially when you go to your meetings, you could read what the answer is instead of only coming here and saying something. So, maybe email them and ask the question, and then you'll have the answer in writing to share with anyone that wants to listen.
I've thought about that, and I'm glad you brought it up, but I like coming to Council, too.
I'm not saying don't come to Council. I'm just saying it might help you doing that.
Well, again, Carla, I like coming to Council. I get to talk to Council and everybody, you know, that comes to Council. So, I think it's important to come to Council. I think it's important when you see City Council come to your neighborhood and that people get to know you. I think it was great, you know, to see as much of the city as we saw at both, you know, street, you know, namies. It was absolutely out of sight, and the city got a 500 instead of 100. So, I'm just telling you, got you. Kudos. Thank you, and I will, I'll take that advice, and I'm going to email you for our next meeting.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll answer.
All right, gatos.
Okay, that takes care of Audience of Citizens. And I go to the Caucus Agenda. That includes all matters such as all staff reports, all caucus reports, meeting minutes, information to report for our June 2024 finances and our June 2024 investments. We're going to go into the Committee of the Whole, which allows Council to consider these staff reports and ask questions about them, provide any kind of direction or comment on them. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and that Committee of the Whole, which I just described, take place.
So moved.
Okay. Let's go to Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. All fair or police say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign, hearing none, and motion is carried. It is 706, State Clerk, Caucus Agenda.
Absolutely. Our first presentation will be by our Director of Finance, Mr. Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. So, tonight, I'm going to present caucus report for the third supplemental appropriation. There's not a lot on this appropriation. The main item is the first bullet point is a $2 million grant to the community improvement incorporation. And this past Monday, the CIC, they voted to accept the grant, and they're going to disperse those funds to the 20 High Street development. And if you remember back to August of 2023, Council passed that ordinance for that development. We also have a $30,000 for fire department training. That is funded by the Hamilton Community Foundation and the One Ohio Opioil Settlement Fund. We received an additional $379,000. We're going to fully appropriate that fund. And just a quick update on that, you heard Dan mention, you know, we were trying to work and get another $150,000 to the Public Works Paving. So, we were going to use CDBG funds to partially fund a medic unit. It's about $150,000. I think we're going to be able to shift that over to the paving. We're going to use this One Ohio Opioil Fund to fund that medic unit. After the medic unit is purchased, there'll be about $625,000 left in that fund. Any questions on that one?
Thank you.
Moving on to Caucus Agenda Items Two and Six will be a presentation by our Director of Utility Operations, Mr. Bill Hudson.
Uh, the Local 20. Okay. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Members of Hamilton. I'm here first to discuss about a memorandum of acknowledgement with Local 20 to their contract. The nuts and bolts basically are, is the range increases for utility plant relief operators, which is the water operators at the South Water Plant and North Water Plant, and water production crew leader, and an increase to the second and third shift differential. Okay. The reason we need to make these changes is, first one, for the water production crew leader to make the contract match what we're actually current practice of how he's being paid. It's just making it paperwork right for that one, so it's no increase for that person. It's just, we had a grievance about it, so this is part of our way of settling that. The, the second part with the shift differential and the, and the range increases for the utility plant relief operators is, currently, we have, we have six positions available. We only have four of them filled. We're having trouble getting people to apply because of being shift work for those operators, and just the pool of people in this area is not real great. So, we're trying to entice some more people away from other, other municipalities, basically the work. And along with that, it takes six months to train them on how we process the water, and that our system's a little bit different than everybody else's. So, we got that ramp time, too. So, even once we hire just a couple people in, it's going to take longer to train them. So, it's just, you can't hire them and you just let them loose, right? So, it's, it takes a while. And the other issue we have up besides being too short now, we're going to have to retire in the first quarter of next year, so we really need to get people in the doors is why we're doing this. It's not, it's not because you want to pay more money, it's just, it's the cost of business now.
Okay.
So, that's all that's in that MLA with them. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the, the second one I'm up here for is, is the ability to apply for an OEP A loan application for water reclamation. It's part of our ongoing process. We've, we've run through a couple with them already for low interest loans. It's part of the Infrastructure Reduction Act that went through Congress. They're low interest, no interest loans. It's not real money, but, so we went through the planning and, and design work for, at the plant. Now, we're looking to replace our old belt filter presses with centrifuges for processes at the plant and upgrade the systems. The loan request is going to be for just shy under $12 million to do, do this work at the plant. And to keep on the cycle, we have to have paperwork in and that, so this is to keep that process going for these. We, we're not quite sure what the interest is going to be, 2% or 3%, but we won't know till the actual markup, because they base it a certain percentage below market rate, so. Again, we're doing this, this is an ongoing process. We've been doing with these grants and low interest loans that we've been rewarded through them, so it's just the next step in that process. We just need your approval to keep going. Any questions on that?
Thank you for your efforts in getting outside money, interest, who interests.
Whatever they offer, I mean, yeah.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Items Three and Nine, we'll have a presentation by our Director of Neighborhood Services, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. Two things on the agenda tonight. The first is an update to an ordinance about commercial quadricycles, which I'm sure most people have no idea what that is. They're kind, they're, most frequently, they would be what you'd see on the street as like a pedal wagon that people go around kind of like as a tour, maybe celebrating a birthday or something like that. And we've had an ordinance in place for a year or two, and, but we are proposing some updates based on feedback from companies that might possibly be interested in doing something like a pedal wagon in Hamilton. The first is to allow passengers under 21 on only when there's no alcohol onboard. So, again, if someone's using it for a tour or, you know, a, you know, that somebody could be on it as long as they're under 21 for whatever reason, if it, there's no alcohol onboard. And then the next is changing the operator, operating hours. Right now, it says that you have to cease operations at 11:00 PM, and we're proposing to change it to midnight, and just basically saying that if they are, I think during the week, the noise ordinance, you have to be quiet after 11, I think it is. And so, this is basically saying they can still operate after 11 for one more hour, but they have to, you know, turn any music off or anything else that might be loud. And then the last change that we're proposing is that we had some conversations with people who are possibly interested, and they said that realistically for their, the business to function, they'd need to be able to somehow cross the river between business districts. So, there, there's, we're proposing language that says, yes, they can use hi, the, the High Main Bridge in a really, or High Main Street in a really limited way, you know, one block at a time during peak hours, and that, all of that would need to be approved by the Police Department. Any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Well, so, I have a few questions, just on a few things that you just said. What would the age be if they were under 21? Can like children, eight years old?
I think it's 18.
Oh, 18, okay.
Is that right, Letitia? Okay.
So, I mean, it doesn't have seat belts, and usually if you're riding it, you pedal, right? Is that correct?
The pedals are not how it moves.
Okay, okay.
It is motorized.
Oh, okay.
So, it's more, the pedals are kind of for fun.
Okay, but there would be no seat belts.
Correct. I don't know that. I don't know how they, I've never been on one.
Okay.
I know that this is, we borrowed language from Cincinnati.
Okay.
That this is how other places use. We, we have, if we change it to this, this will be how, it'll be regulated how it is other places.
And this is a private company that runs this. There's no benefit to the city whatsoever. We don't make money on this.
No.
Do people pay to ride it, or you rent it?
You, you rent, you rent it.
Okay.
So, yeah, there would be, there would be a payment to the company to rent it out.
And, and you pay for the alcohol while you're on it?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's like a, a limit to the amount of alcohol you can bring. It's some, it's pretty strongly regulated by the state. I think you, it's like a very limited amount that you can bring per person.
Oh, so they bring it on, you bring it on yourself?
Yes.
They don't have it on there?
Correct.
So, you buy the alcohol. Okay, got it. And then, is this competition for our establishments on Main Street and around the neighborhoods? I mean, when you get down to Markham Park, if this thing's driving by all the bars and restaurants?
Not, I don't think, I, it, we're, the discussion has been the complete opposite of that, that the way that of that, that the way that people utilize them is to kind of drive around some, but then kind of hop from restaurant or, you know, bar or whatever to, to go, you know, to go around Hamilton and actually go into businesses, so parks. And, you know, they're somewhere for half hour, 45 minutes, and then they go to the next place.
And are these Dora cups or these cans?
It does not interact with Dora. So there would be, you know, there'd be alcohol, people, when they get off, would have to leave any alcohol they have on that's associated with the pedal wagon, which they can bring on, that is not purchased necessarily from a, a business. And then, then they would leave it and then go into establishment and purchase alcohol and then they would not be able to bring that back on.
Okay. And, and do you jump off and on? Or do you like start at the courthouse and you end at the courthouse? Is that all?
Yes. It would be one group of people, is my understanding, renting it. They all get on at one location and all go to every location together.
Okay. And then my last comment would just be that on Main Street, we have a lot of apartments now. And I have heard quite a few complaints from the Rossville Flats when some of the establishments close, a lot of noise and people.
Mm-hmm.
12:00 AM on a Tuesday night does not seem realistic to me. That would be my personal opinion, to be allowing people to be pedaling through town in the middle of the week and knowing now that it's happening because we do have a lot of establishments that are open later. So just my thoughts. Thank you.
Liz, this is a pilot program, correct?
Yes.
I think the legislation even says pilot program.
Right.
Okay. So we can see.
So it's kind of a learning experience. We, all of this is kind of theoretical at this point, but the reason they asked to push it was, with the feedback we got, there was nobody thinking they'd be operating during the week. It would be maybe Thursdays and then Fri, you know, but, but you're absolutely right that it opens the door, but that if it doesn't work out, that it's a pilot and we could amend.
Yeah. One last question. Do we still expect the EV shuttles to be running at any point in Hamilton? Cause they're slow moving as well. So I'm thinking about traffic. If you have the slow moving vehicles, you have the pedal quadricycles, just wondering.
Economic development is nodding their head yes.
That we are going to have EVs?
Yeah, that's moving forward. So I'm seeing some nodding heads. Yeah, those, we had, we had a lot of conversations about this and, and it was a cross departmental team, you know, engineering, traffic, police, economic development, trying to troubleshoot this is something that, how do you make something? Cause we were operating out of the assumption that this is something that we want, that, cause the, the legislation has already been approved. And so there, and then there was a request to tweak it by a company that was considering Hamilton. And we had a lot of discussions about, you know, how to, how to listen to what they're saying would be required to make something like this work, but also make sure it's safe and works for all of us. So.
Great. Thank you.
That's not fair.
I'm looking at a picture of one. I don't know if it's standard, but this is pretty big.
Yeah.
Driving down, cause the one I'm looking at has five bicycle seats on each side and then a bench in the back that holds, I don't know, depending on how big you are, four or five people, so.
Yeah, I think that's probably.
Wasn't what I was thinking it would be. I was thinking more like what, um, was it pedal?
Pedicab.
No, pedal, oh, yeah. Tony Gray, what he had.
The pedal, pedal cab, yeah.
So it'll be interesting.
Yeah.
What time does it start? What can you, time, can you start it? Anytime at the day?
I, I'm sure not, but I don't remember. That wasn't being amended, so I don't remember.
I can look it up on the other one.
We can get those answers for you. I apologize.
Thank you.
Kind of really should have brushed up on the whole ordinance before I came up here.
Well, you can be one of the first ones to ride it to see.
For sure.
Mr. Mayor, a little clarity. I've had the pleasure of riding on, if you will, the pedal wagons. And the pedals are there kind of as Liz said, as decoration a little bit. They might add a little bit of help because of the hills and things like that that are diverse in, in Cincinnati and all over the bridges to Northern Kentucky and back. They are for the, the entertainment districts usually, so it would make sense if Main Street and High Street would be included. And then they would move to Court Street or they move to Ross Avenue or Park Avenue to get around. They do, they do have a relationship with the taverns and the pubs and the restaurants and things like Tonneau does. You go in and spend a half an hour, you're allowed to take two pre-mixed beverages in a, like a cooler, and they put them in a, in a central cooler in the, in the center of the, of the pedal wagon, in master cooler. And then as Liz said, the, the beverage is stay onboard. You climb off, you go into the restaurant bar of choice that has an agreement with the Jones Company that's running the pedal wagon. We'll be at your restaurant at 4:30. We will leave at 5:00. And there might be a, a, a special that goes on when those people, the 14 or 16 people that are usually on the pedal wagon, there is music associated. No, usually there are not seat belts. So I can, I can share that with you because you're on like a bicycle seat. They, they are slow moving, so they're not 10 or 15 miles an hour and, and moving along at a, at a running pace. They're a little bit slower, like at a, at a fast walk pace. The people that rent it are on and then off, so they don't pick up people along the way that join the party or anything like that. And you have a start point and a stop point. And then the Jones family that has rented that pays $200 for that two hour fee or whatever, three hour time. And then they might rent it again at 8 o'clock and it runs until the 11:00. So it can be a couple of times a day. They are fun. They've got river paddle boats that run the same type of a party, kind of like a tiki boat that run on the river and things. So they are fun. They are novel. They do have sides to come down if it would be raining and things like that, that they can lower the curtains. So you're riding in one of the plastic curtained view boxes to be able to enjoy your ride and enjoy the restaurants and taverns that they're stopping in along the way.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on a couple of questions. There was a question related to hours of operation. So in the rules, it states operation between the hours of 9:00 AM and midnight only. So that's the parameter of the time. That's possible. And it says that they can't operate outside of the parameters of our noise ordinance. When the last version of the ordinance gave a restriction for you had to be 21 and older. And in this revision, we didn't say, you know, you have to be at least a certain age. So that may be something that we, I know we've been working with a particular vendor to see kind of how they operate. So if that's a question, we can go back to follow up to see, cause I know in other jurisdictions, you can't ride if you're under a certain age and if you are under a certain age and you need to get a waiver or something of that. So we can follow up with the vendor to see kind of what their operating practices are.
Yeah, that would be great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor, please. Uh, thank you, Liz. How long is the pilot program? Do we know? Couple of months?
I'm going to look at Letitia again. I'll say two years. One year.
I don't know that we put a timeframe. I know we said we were going to just only have two vendors. Let me see what we say in terms of a timeframe. Yeah, I don't see that we, we put an exact timeframe on it.
I think it would be important only because of, say, big concert nights when we have, you know, several thousand people downtown getting in their cars to leave and then to have to follow that out Main Street or this could be interesting.
The, the way, that is the main thing we focused on. There is no, the, the, they have to go, they can only be on for one block at a time to avoid that. So that is, um, when they're, when they're on higher Main Street, that there would be only, um, cause they were, it was just that practically speaking, there was a need for them to, for logistically for it to work because it, we think, we, we just think it'll be safer than being on Park or Ross, um, that there was going to need to be times that they were on High and Main, cause it's slower moving traffic, but only for one block at a time.
Thank you.
We can definitely put some answers to all these questions since I was not prepared to answer questions more broadly about the project, about the ordinance tonight, so that you all have that information.
Great. Thank you.
In, in terms of timing, it just says it can be terminated or modified at any time, so it doesn't give a specific timeframe.
So if we approve this on the caucus agenda tonight, what does that mean? I mean, if.
It, it'll proceed to, to staff report for revisions to the ordinance at the next council meeting.
And we can hold, moving the staff report forward, um, while we get feedback from you all, when we get, you know, send an email to you.
Thanks.
Second one is sale of property located at 3040 Dixie Highway, but as you can see, it's strip of land behind the properties. It's, um, the person who owns both of these properties, both these buildings, well, it's the same property owner and he's asking to acquire this legacy canal land that is frankly kind of a no man's land right now, um, behind their property. And what he would like to do is add to parking for the, both of these properties. One is, it's a multi-tenant storefront, but it, one of the, he is the owner of the liquor store in it. It's just south of Bob Meyer, if you're familiar. And then the next building is vacant currently, but is, you'll, if you've gone by recently, you'll see that there's like a sign, that's where Penn Station is moving in. And he is proposing to acquire it for $13,500. There's kind of a, there's, this has been a long process. We've, we've shared some costs with surveys and things like that. There's a reason that number, came to that number. But then in addition, he's proposing $150,000 of investment that includes, some of it's the parking lot, but it's also landscaping improvements along Route Four and also like painting the building and just general improvements to the vacant building that's going to become Penn Station and it has another tenant space. And so we are proposing to sell this land to help him expand his park, to address his parking needs and also kind of remove this area that's been an issue in the past of people dump and kind of trespass back there. And so it's, you know, have a, have an owner that's right there on site all ti, at all times. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Last question. It mentioned in there, this doesn't interfere with the Miami to Miami Trail. Where is that trail?
So the trail will actually be proposed right behind the red, the parcel that we're proposing to sell. That land right behind it is owned by the city of Fairfield. It's Fairfield's canal land and they have in writing agreed that, that it can go there.
Oh, good. Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Next up for agenda items four and five will be a presentation by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jody Gunderson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Jody Gunderson, Director of Economic Development. The first item before you tonight is a recommendation relative to a request for a local tier tax abatement through the community reinvestment area for WSSA Hamilton VA. The, the WSSA stands for West Second Street Association. This is a company that has done a number of these types of federal buildings. They actually answer RFPs for these buildings. And what's especially nice about this one is that it, aside from it being a VA clinic, it's a absolutely great addition to that medical area out there. And it's great to see, um, people that have served being treated with an amenity like this so close by to where they live. The estimated project investment is about $13 million. The jobs created would be about 40 full-time jobs over three years. And what we are offering on this one is a 50% tax abatement for a period of 10 years.
On to the next one. Got it.
Next item is a recommendation relative to authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and High Street. The city of Hamilton be the seller. Hamilton Hospitality Inc. the purchaser. The city is proposing to sell approximately 3.4 or 3.34 acres for $50,000 to Hamilton Hospitality for a dual branded Hilton Hotel with at least 160 rooms. Hamilton Hospitality will invest a minimum of $21.6 million in the development. That's how it sits roughly. We, that's something that I know that you all, we've been working on for quite some time. What's especially important about this is just how it, it fits into the environment in the downtown. The developer in this one has just really listened well to what we were looking for out of, out of the development at that site. The yellow building there is going to be a restaurant pad that, that will sit there, but will be a part of this whole development here. Now they're estimating a project to be about 28.8 million. They'll have about 35 full-time jobs and nine part-time employees. At this point, the development, we are recommending a hundred percent for 15 years CRA for this project. It gives you a little bit better view of what the streetscape is and how it interplays with the rest of the buildings downtown.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody.
Next up for agenda item number seven will be a presentation by our Director of Engineering, Mr. Alan Messer.
If you remember back in June, I came to you with the proposal to apply for grant funding for the New London at Washington Signal. That was to OKI. And I said we'd be back again with the very same application, this time to ODOT. So what we're doing essentially is doubling our chances of getting a grant. It's literally the same numbers that we applied to OKI for. This one's decided in December. That one's decided in October. If we are successful at OKI, we'll withdraw this application. Are there any questions?
Interception, improve us all about safety. I understand that even so.
I'm, I'm very hopeful that we do get one or the other, probably the first one.
Thank you.
Move forward.
Thank you.
All right. Next up for agenda item number eight will be a presentation by our Fire Chief, Mr. Thomas Eichelberger. Thomas Eichelberger.
Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens, Tom Eichelberger, Hamilton Fire Chief. I'm here tonight to request that you consider the acceptance of a grant award that was applied for by our department through the Ohio Office of Budget and Management. This is of the same organization that we applied for a smaller grant award previously. They were awarded $20 million through the ARPA House Bill 45. And the funds were not all spoken for, so they put out a second opportunity. We applied again and were awarded a much more substantial award this time than we were last time. This money would be allocated for retention bonuses for personnel, just like the last time, and if distributed equally, which would be the, the goal, each person would receive, each employee of the department would receive roughly $2,394.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for agenda item number 10 will be a presentation by our Director, our Executive Director of Project Implementation, Mr. Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. We've been working with the Ohio Rail Development Commission and Norfolk Southern for improvements at the railroad crossing on Maple Avenue. This is the one over near Erie Highway, or Erie Boulevard, not this one, not the CSX line, but the Norfolk Southern line. With these projects, the railroad is responsible for the construction costs of the improvements. However, if there's any right-of-way required, the city is responsible for that. And so we are asking for your permission to purchase right-of-way and temporary construction easement in order for them to construct the project. They will be installing new crossing gates, new sidewalks and curves at that intersection. And also, we have to close the entrance that goes into the U-Haul location, and that's what this purchase is for, is to remove that access drive so that prevents people from accessing out into the railroad right-of-way there. So the right-of-way to be purchased is .003 acres, and the temporary construction easement to be purchased is .004 acres for a total cost of $2,100. Are there any questions? This is a drawing showing the two small pieces of property to be purchased and the right, and the easement.
We're good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, for items 11 through 18, we have a presentation from our Senior Planner, Mr. Ed Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. Ed Wilson, Senior Planner, Planning Department. We'll try and get through this as fast as possible. I do think that these will be some easier items, but my first item is 20 High Street, which actually has a few items to it. There are existing parcels of our old city building. There's also our existing parking lot at 40 High Street. There's also a request to vacate existing right-of-way, such as former canal lands and unknown land that wasn't vacated. And there's also a dedication plat for existing sidewalk on Riverfront Plaza. You're also now seeing that the whole rezoning proposal is to rezone from DT1, which is our High Street Form Based District, to BPD, which is our Business Plan Development District in anticipation of a hotel project. And as part of that BPD, there's also a proposal for a final plan to have a hotel along with any related associated tenant accessory uses for such a project. So BPD was recommended by city leadership in order to help protect that property further and have safeguards for the community. And because of how unique that proposal is, it's our historic municipal building, it's on historic inventory, so we want to make sure that those proposals were kept in place. This is basically a draft concept of the hotel, but do note that the Business Plan Development has checks that provide for commercial design standards and ensuring that whatever goes on the site is complimentary and protective of our historic downtown. Next, I have the Nice Bridge at Central dedication plat. This is part of our engineering team's ongoing efforts to remedy and rectify dedication and right-of-way issues in the city. We have one for parcels that exist within the Nice Bridge and Central Avenue intersection, as well as one that is at Martin Luther King in between Dayton and Butler Streets. They have the parcel that is currently occupied by existing sidewalk and right-of-way. I also have our Hamilton Parks Plan. This is actually a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, which is the city's comprehensive plan. Basically, it's highlighting that Hamilton's home to 40 parks and that there was a need to focus the plan on adding teen and youth oriented elements to the park to better engage that age range. Some of that included general improvements such as water fountains, increased lighting, shelters, and then others were, again, the teen and youth oriented elements such as aesthetic lighting, athletic fields, diverse city options, as well as places to study to further entice that age group. Bless you. Next, we do have St. Anne's, the church and school facility. There's actually a right-of-way vacation that is being city-led. St. Anne's is actually trying a lot consolidation with the properties. They're actually disparate properties, but under due diligence, they discovered that the, there's still right-of-way existing within their rear parking lot. So when that was brought to our attention, the city, in order to facilitate that timeline and St. Anne's, did a city-led vacation application. So there's two alleys that are within that parking lot, and this right-of-way vacation is to vacate that so that a lot combination could legally occur. And then finally, we have 1800 Princeton Road. We have that on the eastern side of Hamilton, east boundary. This is for the Butler County 911 Coroner Joint Facility. This is a preliminary and final plan development because that property is actually zoned OPD, which is our Office Plan Development. They have that office parking, as well as proposing an eight-foot security fence because of the unique nature of that development. They're also proposing multiple landscaping improvements on that 12-acre site, 142 trees, 165 bushes, perennials. And those are the elevations that are principal. The eastern elevation would be their front facade, the public facing facade, while the southern elevation would be the Princeton Road facade, the actual frontage. The proposal itself features 86% brick, 40%, 14% metal, excuse me, in which is in compliance with our commercial design standards and a much higher quality for, per our zoning ordinance. Okay, that's the summation of my report. Any questions, Stephanie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for agenda items 19 and 20 will be a presentation by our Director of Health, Ms. Cindy Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here this evening to speak to you about two grant opportunities for our health department. The first is the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, which funding is $29,721.53. That time period is July 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2025. The second grant opportunity is for COVID-19 Enhanced Operations Reallocation and Extension Grant. That funding is for $75,000. The period is August 1st of 2024 to December 31st of 2025, and that grant will support our nursing services for COVID-19, MPOCs, and measles. Please consider these grants for our health department. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for agenda item 21 will be a presentation from our Director of Planning, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
So I'm actually just going to flip to the next slide real quick just so you can see the photo. I think it just helps explain the situation a little better. So this is a property at 826 Buckeye that the city acquired quite a number of years ago. There was the front home on Buckeye Street, the primary residential structure, was demoed with state grant dollars through the Butler County Land Bank quite a number of years ago. At that time, this rear accessory dwelling unit was also blighted and vacant, but it shares a common wall with the rear structure on 828 Buckeye, and it was occupied. And so demolition did not occur on the rear structure at the same time that the house was brought down with those demo dollars for that reason. Since then, it has just been this existing blighted structure on city property. The adjacent structure has been occupied until, I think, about a year and a half ago. So it is vacant now and is no longer grandfathered in as this accessory dwelling unit on the property, but it's just sort of this unique situation. So we've been trying to figure out how to get this down for a number of years, but, oh, I'm sorry. Ultimately, a new owner came into the picture, which has sort of helped move this along, and they purchased the 828, so the adjacent property, earlier this year. They have worked with Marcus Oliver and our resident services teams because it was a building with a lot of nuisance violations. They have fully renovated the front home. They have interest in acquiring the city lot. So we have had discussions with them. There's a draft sale and development agreement that is coming, coming to you with the proposal that this property be transferred to the adjacent owner for a dollar, but in exchange for that, they will take on the cost of the demolition of the half, the half of the structure that sits on the current city property on 826. They potentially have interest in using that back structure on 828 still. However, I just want to make sure you're aware that is going to be subject to planning commission approvals and, you know, necessary oversight through the planning process because it is no longer grandfathered in because it has been vacant long enough that it's lost that status. So what becomes of that remains to be seen, but regardless, he is interested in acquiring this property, and this has just sort of been this problem child for the city's, obviously a very large liability and is a huge blight on the neighborhood. So I think it's a win just to get it into someone's hands who's going to take down that structure. I guess the last note is, we are proposing that this is an emergency ordinance at the next meeting, simply to just expedite this demolition so that it's not sitting for two more months while we work through the legislative process. So the sooner we can execute an agreement, if you all approve, the sooner it will come down. Any questions?
Next up for our final caucus agenda item, agenda item number 22, presented by our Executive Director of Infrastructure, Mr. Edwin Porter. Before we get started, I'd like to make a note on the record that Councilmember Lauer has stepped down from the dais and left council chambers at 7:50 PM.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. Presenting quickly, so this is regarding the, the former Pleasant Avenue landfill. So Rich presented the same presentation on June the 12th, and this is just a subsequent update of that. So as a quick reminder, Pleasant Avenue landfill was a private landfill opened in the 1940s. Hamilton leased and operated the site from 1967 until it was closed in 1970. The Ohio EPA has deemed the city as a responsible party for the landfill, and they have approved an explosive gas monitoring plan that's been in place for many years to remediate methane gas, and they mandated gas collection on the site. So construction of a gas collection system is required, and in order to do so, we require a utility easement from adjacent property owners. And we've been unsuccessful in reaching an agreement with the property owner on the purchase of the permanent utility easement, and so we're proposing to appropriate the easement for construction of the system. So this is just a diagram showing that easement. So the process is lined out here. So we've already obtained an appraisal for this property, provided written notice and intent, of intent and a written good faith offer to the property owner. The resolution for the appropriation, so this legislation was passed by this council on July the 10th, 2024, and the next steps are the ordinance for the appropriation will be presented at the August 28th meeting, 2024. If passed, the process will continue and we'll file a petition for appropriation and file a deposit with the courts. And just as a note, that during the entirety of this process, we will continue to be open for negotiations with the property owner. Any questions on that?
Questions?
Thank you. That concludes our presentations.
Matt Lauder, I guess we can close committee, the whole, open the regular meeting. Poll 22, vote on 22, then bring him in.
That would be the most efficient, Mr. Mayor.
That, all right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll set the motion to the committee to hold be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Hearing none. It's 7:53, the committee hold is closed. I'll set the motion to the regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
And Lauer is absent.
Okay. So is there a motion to poll number 22?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Nab. I guess we have to vote on that separately, so can you read in number 22 separately?
Do we acknowledge Mr. Lauer is not here?
I think we already did that.
Oh, you did. Okay, sorry.
The record, Mr. Lauer has not returned since he left when 22 was presented by Mr. Pullman.
And I'll read number 22 into the record. A recommendation relative to appropriating property located at 1931 Logan Avenue located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio for permanent utility easement. M&amp;L Storage Facilities LLC, property owner, city of Hamilton, purchaser.
Can we do a roll call, vote for that after?
Okay, is there a motion that council received, report number 22, have a consent agenda and concur in the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, second please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer is absent. That motion is adopted, 6-0.
Okay, can we bring in Councilmember Lauer? Yeah. All right, with the exception of the item so noted and voted upon already, there are motion to council receive their other reports of consent agenda, consent agenda and concur in their recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. For the record, we reconvene the regular meeting at 7:53. At 7:56, we just made the vote on the, on the consent agenda items. So we now go to council, as to obtain the legislative items, and I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Vice, Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried also at 7:56. Now go into pending legislation, agenda item number 23, second reading ordinance involving Hill's Board for Fire Prevention Code, civil violations.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by amending and supplementing Chapter 1505 Fire Prevention Code to allow for civil citations and to designate the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve as the Appeals Board for Fire Prevention Code of Civil Citations for the second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote please. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
It's with Agenda Item Number 24, second reading of an ordinance involving zoning ordinances and then the Fire Prevention Code.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 4100 Board of Zoning Appeals to allow the Board to take appeals by any person aggrieved by any officer, department, board, or bureau of the City of Hamilton affected by a decision of the fire chief or their designee under the Fire Prevention Code, save Hamilton applicant, the second reading.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Comments or discussions on this one? I want to thank everybody who worked on this. This one makes a heck of a lot of sense, okay? Roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 25, which is the second reading involving a right-of-way on Cleveland Avenue.
An ordinance approving a right-of-way dedication plot of parts of city lots 24398, 24408, 22571, and 24519 as public right-of-way on Cleveland Avenue, save Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion, comments on this one? None, roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Now go to Agenda Item Number 26, second reading of an ordinance involving licensing fees for food establishments and operations.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 1733 fees and charges of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio relative to license fees for certain food establishments and food service operations addition of person and charge level one food safety training fee and burial fee, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Now go to new legislation, and we go to Agenda Item Number 27, two rigs emergency ordinance involving the Ross Hamilton Joint Economic Development District.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to terminate the joint economic development district contract with, and, sorry, and dissolving the Ross Hamilton Joint Economic Development District I and declaring an emergency, first of two readings.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended, said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to terminate the joint economic development district contract and dissolving the Ross Hamilton Joint Economic Development District I and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman. Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 28, which is two rigs emergency ordinance involving the classification of director of project implementation.
An emergency ordinance amending Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13th, 2023, to reestablish and amend the classification description and pay range for the director of project implementation, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of that emergency.
Emergency ordinance amending Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13th, 2023, to reestablish and amend the classification description and pay range for the director of project implementation classification, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Audience and city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge the Hamilton Fire Department and all the other agencies that provide mutual aid for the fire, structured fire in 400 block of Dayton Street. It was an amazing response, and we were fortunate to ensure that there was no collateral damage. There were no injuries to any of our first responders and to get that building demoed as quickly as possible. Currently, we have temporary fencing up around the site. There is, there are plans to install permanent fencing once the demolition is complete. There is a plan that is being put in place now to get that scheduled. Additionally, the road is currently closed. We are awaiting for a crew to come in and finish taking down some trees that were damaged nearby. And once those trees are removed, which should be at some point later this week, the road will be reopened, the sidewalk will be reopened, and the site will continue to be fenced until the demolition and removal of all the debris is complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Audience and council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
A few items, I will be as quick as I can. I just want to say thank you to Tanos and Seventeen Strong for what has been an awesome couple of weeks. They have opened up their restaurant to really empower neighborhoods and get the neighborhoods to get to know one another. And, you know, I've been tending a few, and Susan and Joel have attended, but I just really want to, you know, thank Tyler and their staff for opening up their business to the city and really embracing the mission of Seventeen Strong. So I really appreciate what they've done for Seventeen. Also want to say thank you to Congressman Davidson. He submitted a bill last week, the Railroad Responsibility Act, which is going to return state oversight for cities and municipalities to regulate block crossings. And this is great because this is something Edwin and I and then Bill talked to him and his staff about in Washington in February. So really appreciative that, you know, he took the time to talk with us, and then now we're seeing that discussion in action on Capitol Hill. So hopefully that will get passed, and we can get some of these crossings unblocked around town. Lastly, Craig and I, city manager and the mayor had a meeting with our Hispanic community at St. Julie's on Sunday afternoon. And it was a great first-time meeting. We're hoping that we're going to have more here in time. But this meeting was a result of the Seventeen Strong Neighborhood Summit, specifically resulted from the Latino business panel discussion. And there was a couple of comments that were made and a couple of things that were said from those in attendance that warranted a meeting and to continue these discussions. So I thought it went well. It took a couple of weeks for me to get a hold of St. Julie's and get a good date confirmed. But the point of this was to just establish communication with our Hispanic folks and to really reiterate our commitment to them that we're always going to listen to them, that we're here to assist them in any hardship that they may experience around town, and that there's always going to be room for them at our table. And I'm looking forward to strengthening our relationship with them and continuing to grow with them and listen to them moving forward. So council, I will let you know when that next meeting is. They just wanted to start out small and just, we're going to see where this goes. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city manager for attending that.
It was well-tended. There was good discussion, and now there's got to be some good action. I want to mention something about the railroad real quick because I'm hoping that that legislation increases the penalty for each violation that the railroad causes. I think it's important that they learn a lesson and that the penalties are increased.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Would there be any advantage of us preparing a letter of support or resolution or something that is sent to the Capitol?
I think it's funny, because coincidentally, Warren was actually doing a town hall tonight next door, and I was able to stop him on the way in. I'm going to, I will be meeting with him tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
And I will mention that.
But everybody concur on that?
True.
Thinkers concurrents on that, right?
Thank you. Great, thank you, Carl.
Other folks?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
Not this weekend, but the following weekend, the weekend of the 23rd and the 24th. There are quite a few events going on, including Hamilton Palooza. The Baden Big Blue Football Game will be held at Fairfield, hopefully the final year that it will not be held in Hamilton. I'm excited about that. This is, this will be a great challenge this year for both teams, and I'm excited to see this event happen. The other thing, school got off to a good start. Our students are eager to come back, and so is our staff. I want to congratulate Andrea Blevins as she will be appointed at the end of next year as the new superintendent of Hamilton City Schools, and I want to wish Mike Holbrook the best in his future retirement at the end of this year. The other thing I want to talk about is Hamilton, Ohio Boxing Classics. Lehman Brewster, who beat Klitschko for a heavyweight title back in 2006, and of course Buster Douglas, who beat Tyson, first one to beat Tyson for the title, will be coming to Hamilton, Ohio. There'll be bowling, there's a bowling event on Friday night at Pullman Lane, starting at 5:00. And then there will be a boxing event where 15 amateur fighters from Indiana and 15 amateur fighters from Ohio will be coming together to, for the first annual Ohio, Hamilton, Ohio Amateur Boxing Classics. This is a, this is a, this thing came about with Lehman Brewster. Boxing is no longer a part of the Olympic Games, and he wants to create an amateur event, and he has chosen Hamilton to begin it. From here on out, he was, this past weekend, he was inducted into the Las Vegas Hall of Fame, and he promoted this so that it'll be, we'll have teams from southeast eventually, the east coast, northwest, and southwest, and the Midwest coming together. They'll take the best fighters from each weight class in each area, and every year, he plans, as long as this is successful, to bring back the Hamilton Amateur Boxing Classic to Hamilton, Ohio and have them all compete here. And eventually, he wants to make this an international event. This is a great opportunity. This is his dream. This is what he wanted to do. I believe we're very fortunate to have it here in Hamilton, Ohio, and I hope that we can make this a success here. So if you're interested in bowling with the champs, go down to Pullman Lane next Friday night. You can go onto the website. I'll be posting it on Facebook, but just look up the Hamilton, Ohio Amateur Boxing Classics. So, but I'm excited about the whole weekend.
Lehman Brewster has been to Hamilton several times. He's no stranger here, and he likes Hamilton, Ohio. He loves our water, and it's just a really good relationship. Buster's been here a couple of times, and some of the most amazing fights ever, but thanks for bringing that up. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I apologize if this was brought up already, but I'd like to commend Daniel Tideman, our city clerk, for his.
You mean Mike, brother?
Mike, that's our new city clerk.
Yeah, Dan's long gone.
I mean, you can't not notice, but it was for such a good cause. One, the donation of the hair, and two, the raising of the money. So can you tell a little bit about how it's all wrapped up?
Sure, I can do that. So by the end of, by the end of this fundraiser that I held, we raised, I think, over five grand for River's Edge, for their concert series. So this supports live acts that are coming to Hamilton, bringing more visitors, supporting our local businesses. We did have a partnership with the organization Hair We Share. They also promoted this fundraiser as well. So we, we, and myself and the Community Foundation felt that they should also receive a portion of these proceeds as well. So we provided a donation to them that helps cover the making of three wigs for their organization, since these are provided free of charge for donors. And, and then I can say I literally have a weight lifted off my shoulders. I've never ran faster in my life, and it felt good to finally do the deed and get it done.
Thanks for doing it.
Congratulations, Daniel.
It was me watching it. Ed got to do some cutting.
Yeah, got to thank Ed Wilson for his excellent haircutting skills.
Applause for Daniel.
I kind of thought you idolized Joe Lauer and just wanted to get the same look. You wear it a little bit.
No, no, no. I'm not cramping your style.
Looks great. Good job.
Anyone else? Okay, I want to say the, real quick about the fire. The way that scene and fire was fought, that should be a textbook. That should really be a textbook study by other first responders. It was that incredible. Now, just congratulations, won't take too awful long, but they're all very important. Vinomax had an expansion, they just celebrated their expansion today. That's a big deal. They've gone from five employees to 240. And congratulations also to Big River Get Down event. Great volunteers, great music. That was just a great, great event. Congratulations to the West of Little Lake.